Okay, Commissioners, welcome back. Ready, motion to come back into session. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Mr. Drax?
Yes.
Yes. Yes, Mr. Archuleta, if you can give us a brief rundown of what we did today.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Taos County Commission, along with some staff members, went out. We started off on West Romero Road, looked at where West Romero Road could possibly be realigned at some future point to come out on Highway 68 next to the National Guard Armory. We looked at some of the land that was out there and also two bridges that would also have to be erected in that area. We then proceeded down West Romero Road to Tom Holder and looked at where some realignment would have to also happen at Tom Holder. We then proceeded from there to Camino del Medio, took a tour of Camino del Medio and stopped at where the city and county line is, had some discussion at Camino del Medio about some possibilities of widening, some straightening out of the road, and also looking at the possibility of proper drainage in that area. From there, we proceeded up through Millicent Road and came on Millicent Road, continued up to Abregadero Road in Cuesta, had a short meeting up, looking at Abregadero Road and looking at the chip seal that had occurred up there for, I believe it was half a mile of chip seal at the cost of about $50,000 or $58,000 to the county. And so, in a nutshell, that was it, and then we returned back.
Thank you, Mr. Archuleta. We'll move on then to Item 6. This is a CDBG hearing. We'll go ahead and open that up again.
Just, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, just real quick, one quick amendment to the agenda. Unfortunately, our Finance Director just lost the cap on his tooth and is having to go to the dentist, so we're gonna go ahead and push Item 7 later on this afternoon. We'll push that to the next meeting next week. Nothing that we have to take care of today.
Okay, so Items 7A and B then?
That's correct, Mr. Chairman.
Get to that, we'll set a motion to do so, correct?
Yes.
Move on then with the CDBG hearing, discussion, decisions regarding the CDBG project for 2014. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, I think Mr. Trujillo has a little bit of information to present on this, then the Commission can have discussion about the priorities for CDBG. Ms. Padilla is on her way down to Albuquerque in order for us to make sure that we attend the planning phase of the CDBG and the grant application. So, I'll turn it over to Mr. Trujillo, and then I think Mr. Chavez has something also that he wants to add.
As our county manager stated, we went to see Abregadero Road, which is, is this particular road falls under alumine with the American Community Survey? It falls at, I'm sorry, another road is up here, forgive me, falls at 55% alumine under the census tracts for Taos County. And we have, we went to see also Milton Rogers Road, which is this red one here, which falls under 49% alumine according to the American Community Survey's population. And then we have Camino del Medio, which falls under the census tract, according to the American Community Survey, at 46% alumine. As you know, CDBG requires a 51% or higher low to moderate income, low to moderate income for qualification for CDBG funds. So, we do have, I did take the liberty of providing you with a, and I think I gave you guys a form, I can give you guys another copy if you'd like, but this was a scoring criteria sheet. And, for example, since Camino del Medio fell at 46% low to moderate income, it really doesn't qualify currently for CDBG funds based on the American Community Survey census tract. But, what'll happen is that our grants administrator will have to do a survey, which is called a survey for that area to make sure that they get all the individuals that they surveyed information based on low to moderate income. And according to DFA, they have to, for Camino del Medio, they have to survey 400, at least 400 people. So, of those 400 people, they have to show 51 or more percent low to moderate income. And I don't know why this keeps turning off, but we've been having some technical difficulties. But, this number right here, if they do the survey for Camino del Medio, could change, you know, but you never know until they conduct the survey. Again, the same thing for Millicent Rogers Road. She has to do a survey, again, based on the American Community Survey sample survey. It's gonna be 400 individuals that they will have to survey. And of those 400, again, they will have to fall within the low to moderate income of 51 or greater. And then, of course, if you decide to do the Abregadero Road, the alumine for that is currently at 55% according to the census tract, but she will have to, they will have to conduct a sample survey of 350 people. So, of those 350 people, they'll have to show a low to moderate income of 51% or higher. So, it's a decision that you all have to make. I know Anita is over there today at that workshop where they have to, we have to give her today actually a road that she needs to submit to the meeting that she's at for, to let them know what road you're gonna apply for. So, based on these individuals, I think we had discussed on Abregadero Road, and correct me if I'm wrong, but there was another method you guys wanted to utilize to ensure that District 2's particular roads would, particular road, Abregadero Road, would be completed, and you would use other types of funding. And I will let Rick Chavez, when the time's right, let you know what money's available for that. But of that, we come down to Camino del Medio and Millicent Rogers Road. Because of the low to moderate income factor, 49% is easier to get to 51% than 46% to 51% when you do these surveys. So, I think we discussed a little bit about, I think we discussed a little bit about the Millicent Rogers Road being the target for CDBG funding this year. Is that correct, Commissioners, what I understood, or you still wanted to look at Camino del Medio?
If you can reiterate that question again, Mike.
We have two roads, I guess, left to discuss for CDBG funding, because I guess Abregadero, Abregadero Road was already worked out, in a sense, where there's other funding available that we can use, because it's a chip seal project, and it won't cost as much as these other two roads. So, what we need to discuss now is what roads the Board of Commissioners from Millicent Rogers and Camino del Medio, they need to decide which ones they need to do.
Commissioners, I guess my thoughts, Mr. Archuleta, and I know you've put a list together, just look at a total list of monies available for various road projects for the next fiscal year.
Yes.
Kind of see what the qualifications are, just exactly what you're telling us, and then, from there, make the determination as to where to go with these.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Chavez actually has a printout of that. He also has it available up on the monitor for us, so that we can put that up, if we can get that up here in a second. We're having some problems with the monitors, I'm not sure why they keep turning off, but...
It wasn't me.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. Mr. Blake, go ahead.
So, our CDBG choice is limited to these three possibilities?
Yes.
Because that's what was discussed at the public hearings. And, based on our tour today, it did seem like we could sufficiently approve, improve Abregadero for maybe in the $100,000 to $150,000 range. On the CDBG is $500,000. And Camino del Medio is the beneficiary of our capital outlay this year, which will go towards engineering. And so, I'm not sure if we could spend the $500,000 on Camino del Medio this year either, if we're putting that money into engineering. So, that leaves Millicent Rogers as the potential beneficiary of using the whole $500,000 and completing the project within the one-year time limit. But, I am concerned about the 49%. I don't want to lose another CDBG grant. The last thing that I would like to see is for us to lose another CDBG grant. And that is a higher-income district a little bit, so I don't know how that's gonna work out.
Mr. Chairman, if I might? We still have to conduct sample surveys, okay? Currently, when the Census Bureau comes to do these, American Community Survey, gather certain information? What funding or what amount of money each individual makes, or what they fall under? When we do the surveys, the sample surveys, we go randomly to certain sections of each household. You can't just go from one side to the other. You have to do a random number count, based on the, on the state, of Milton Rogers, corner people that you have to sample survey. You have to do a random number generator, then you have to go to those houses in that order to see which ones, you know, are gonna qualify. Usually, we can fall within that range to meet low to moderate income. 49% is a lot easier to try to get to 51% than 46%. Does that make sense?
It does, it does. What happens if you do the survey and you don't hit the 51?
Then...
Then it's adios.
We're gonna have to do the survey, that's the thing, if we have to do the surveys in a time, so we can come back.
But there still would be time for a Plan B?
Yes, I mean, the survey should take more than a week to do, if you authorize staff to get them done right away. So, what I would recommend is that we do sample surveys for both roads right away when we go out, and see what type of samples you get, what type of alumine you get with these sample surveys.
Commissioners, do not...
What kind of... I think about this when they did the surveys in Maito and Culiacoco, 'cause of three houses. You know, what I mean, so, you know, if you got houses there that are worth half a million, a million, or 200? And that's what happened to me. See, and you gotta consider too, that you don't hit the whole $500,000, because... Culiacoco.
But see, there's houses there that are worth $100,000 there. You don't know what level of income each house has until you actually conduct the survey. So, historically, we've been getting, like, for, say, for example, for Chitos, we qualify and we got $400,000 that particular project. And then, in your project, I think we got about 140 or something like that. That aspect of it, so, you know, we've done these CDBG projects, we've never really gone to $500,000 a month for roads, because that's what, you know, depending on the board when you go present your case, a few of us were there last year when we went to go present the project. But it usually depends on the board, that, the grant council, that decides what amount of funding you're gonna get. But my recommendation, because we do have these other two roads, and I think we've resolved the road with Abregadero, is to conduct, conduct sample surveys as soon as we can with these two particular roads.
And Abregadero would only be about 100? How much would it cost to bring that up to the condition of the rest of it? $114,000?
$119,400.
Okay.
But let me ask this question, Chairman. Last week...
Well, last week, what I said is that the minimum I recommend is three inches, but you could spend all 500 or less. If you had 500, you would get five inches of hot mix on the portion that's not chip sealed or double-pen. But to double-penetrate the rest of the road, it would...
Mr. Chairman, so if it comes out that Millicent does not qualify and Camino del Medio is, we still have the problem of spending the money within a year? Is there some, is there some section of Camino del Medio that we could choose, that we could do a three-inch overlay that would improve that section of the road and allow us to spend the money within the one-year period? And then still conduct the engineering on the other portion? I don't know.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I actually called Anita, who was on her way down to Albuquerque, and I have her on the phone, I put her on speaker. She actually said that we could look at other roads, as long as they were on the ICIP list. I told her the dilemma of what we're being faced with, which is the low to moderate income of 46 and 49 on both of those. And she said even with the survey, she thinks it would be difficult on both of those roads to get it past 51%. So, I need to talk, Camino del Medio and Millicent Rogers, just because of the homes that are, I don't know what they are. So, Anita, I'm gonna put you on speaker here. Go ahead, go ahead.
So, yes, yes, I'm sure that we, according to some of the qualified, the public, the public, the state, the ICIP, it could, it could, it could be, again, we have to look at the neighborhoods that they're located in, because they have to be 50% and above low to moderate income for them to qualify. We also have to look at the capacity, whether, I mean, are we gonna, they're gonna push off, are they gonna keep converting the engineer, because they have to be, they're going to be in here. There's gonna be no way, because there's not gonna be shovel any, and we could see options when we get into our content, or we want, I mean, we even have an office that there, but they actually wanna see the plan of when we come in a whole different application. So, if we pick a, a content, a new content, where we can use in-house engineering, such as this chapter, from the Department of West Department, you know, we weren't able to show that we have a plan in place.
Well, my question is probably not for Anita, but which other roads are on the ICIP plan?
You know what, I'm driving down the road right now, I do not have the ICIP with me. I'm sure somebody does have a copy of one ICIP.
I can go check, we can...
Maybe, maybe we should take a five-minute break, and then we can call you back, you know? See, because the thing about it is, the way I look at it, Milton Rogers ain't gonna qualify, Camino del Medio ain't gonna qualify. The only way Camino del Medio is gonna come up to this is gonna be the following year, when you already have spent what the legislature has given. You have, what is $130,000 for, from the county, and higher than that to the town. And then, besides that, by the time, like, the way you, some of the Commissioners wanted to sign it, you know, that's gonna be a project for four or five years down the road, because that's the amount of money it's going to take to put in sidewalks, and buy property, or investments, you know? That's really a real, you know, you know, the only way that it might qualify, and you can do it with one CDBG grant, is just do an overlay. But if you're gonna obtain property and whatever, you're talking, having to use a CDBG grant for the next five years.
Yeah, you're talking several million.
Yeah.
Well, I, I almost think we'll have to, we did it with Western Road, you know, very little Commission support, but we did it through the NPR field many years ago. So, somehow or another, we can do it. I'm wondering, there's sections of Camino del Medio, say, for example, up on the, on the Cuchilla, on that ridge, where we know for sure that low to moderate income in those households there is definitely existence. Could we use a portion of that on a survey like this, or...
I do understand that one location...
Say, for example, that area from Tom Holder on up to the hill, all the way up to West Romero Road, all of that district there, all of that area that is primarily District 1 and 3, but there are a lot of low-income.
Yeah, but that's a portion of it, but most things, you know...
Yeah, because it's raw land at this time.
And you would need, you need acquisition there as well.
So, is CDBG allowable, or can you do land acquisition with CDBG?
Not still, or...
Okay.
You know, we tried, we tried to do a home design on Upper Chitos, the fact we advertised for the engineering. We got it, we got firms who, we walked the whole road and took together a big effort to try to, I didn't really go to the test, but I went and met with DFA and, and said, no, you just can't do it.
So, Mike, the survey that takes place, Mike, has to be in the vicinity where the road is gonna go?
In that general area.
It can't be the people who are actually gonna use it, well...
You can't do a survey in, in, let's say, for example, in Upper Chitos Road, and then pay a few of the money for a road in, in, let's say, Los Colonia's or something, you know? The road, it has to be contiguous to where, you know, where you're going to do the project. And just to give you, I mean, I hate to be the devil's advocate, but Taos County, we have a population of 32,937, okay? Our total, my, total low to moderate income persons in the entire county are 15,133. Total low to moderate income households in the entire county are 6,040. This is, Taos County averages a 46% total county for low to moderate income. So, so, it's just the areas that you, that you, that you pick. That's when you do these surveys, you try to pick areas that are, you know, I mean, you really don't know, it's difficult. I mean, it's one of those things where it could be chicken, it could be tuna. So, it just makes it difficult. But Anita was right when she said, you know, they're hard to meet in certain, in certain high-income areas of the county, it's hard to meet low to moderate income there.
So, the only one that qualifies in is Abregadero?
Abregadero Road is the only, and that's just using the survey for the census tracts, so it's obvious that at 55%, they already qualify with the census tracts, but if you do the, if you have to do the survey, they should still qualify for low to moderate income in that general area.
And the total amount available for CDBG is half the... Five hundred. But if, if we did the chip seal, it would only take up about $119,000, $120,000. So, could there be other projects then in the county with the CDBG?
No, in the...
They have to be connected?
In the ICIP, the only thing that's in the ICIP which is technically feasible is Wyber, and you know that low to moderate is not gonna fit up there either, much of us. And of course, you got the bridge, which gives engineering to do that.
But could you split it up, like, Chairman of the Zaca's Ridge? No, can you, can you do a couple of little projects, as long as they meet low to moderate?
As long as it's in the ICIP.
And it's in the ICIP. So, we could put in Abregadero on, on CDBG, so...
You could put that as part, we could change, pick a road adjacent to that area for its low to moderate income to do another roadway.
Yeah, it's gotta be on the ICIP.
Yeah, but it's gotta be in the ICIP, and what, what you have in that area, I don't know what you have.
Well, the question is, do they have to be in the top five, or six, or seven, or just in the ICIP?
Just in the ICIP, as they have to be.
Anita's gonna come back with those answers. You said, Steve, is she gonna be, are we gonna, is she still on the line?
No, I can get her on the line, no...
Because I think that's the question now. Do those roads have to be, say, for example, if the Commission agreed to apply CDBG funding to Abregadero, it's gonna be about $120,000 or the chip seal, that's what we call it, right? Versus, what amount if it's paid?
500?
About $500,000 if it's paid. If the Commission wishes to just do the chip seal on it, we have an extra $380,000 available. Do those roads have to be connected to Abregadero in order to qualify for CDBG?
The roads have to be identified.
As long as they are on the ICIP plan?
They don't have to be connected, just like with La Plaza and Bridge, keep the last year, they're gonna be separate.
As long as they're identified as an application.
No, the question is for Anita, is do they have to be in the top, whatever, or can it just be in the ICIP?
As long as they're in the ICIP.
And I did, I did just ask her the question about, is this something that the Commission could decide on on Tuesday? And she said, we probably have about a week and a half. She has to have, the applications are due May 1st. She has, depending on what road we choose, or the Commission chooses, she has about a three-week application process, she also has to do the surveys, and then, depending on the road, she also may have to do the environmentals. And so, that's why she has to have at least four to five weeks' lead time prior to going in. So, we did the calendar really quick. If we could pick it by next Tuesday, it was something that, you know, if the Commission doesn't choose to do that today and get more information, she'll be back from the training on Wednesday, what's the day, Tuesday, Thursday, and can answer some more of those questions for the Commission on Tuesday. But as long as they're on the ICIP list, it's important.
So, on the ICIP list, we have Abregadero, and then the Pilar Bridge, which would definitely qualify.
It's not qualified.
And those are the ones, I'm just stating them as they are on the list, as far as priority is concerned. Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, going back to the Abregadero, what if we're to do the whole payment on it, you know, with CDBG grant? Would that be something, instead of the two-inch penetration, would that...
You could spend all 500,000 on the portion that's not double-penetrated.
Mr. Chairman, now, let me, see if I can make a little sense. If we're gonna go and do Abregadero, spend the whole $500,000 under, in the meantime, you get what you need from Milton Rogers and Camino del Medio, and you know whether they're gonna qualify for next year or not. You know what I mean? And if you get them surveys, and you know you don't have the more than 51%, well, the Commission is gonna be here next year, or before I leave, we put on other roads on the ICIP plan, and the first priority, and then you take it from there. Because other than that, if we're gonna be moving around, it's gonna happen what happened last year, we ain't gonna get nothing.
I guess, I guess the only concern that I have is that, you know, I agree, we need to do Abregadero Road to some, to some point. I don't know that the amount of traffic on it merits, in my opinion, doing just the chip seal versus five, six inches of pavement on it. Is that the best, most responsible way of using taxpayer...
Well, you know, the five inches is kind of an overkill.
Overkill.
Yeah. But, you know, you have, you have other roads, like Los Corlos Road, which is a good candidate, it's well-drained.
Which one is worse?
Los Corlos, from the sewer plant, doing...
I mean the sewer plant?
Sewer plant towards the C one ten.
But that wouldn't qualify either.
That wouldn't qualify because of the LMI. The only thing you got left is Las Tussas and, uh, and Cactus Flower. Um, that might be questionable.
Upper Ranchitos Road Bridge probably.
That's not ours anymore.
Okay.
It's a town.
Commissioner Sanchez. Chairman Commissioners, uh, and this is something, you just brought something up there. I've gotta bring in the Rio Grande de Norte, you know? We have been talking to the Colorado County Commissioners. And I'm sure that's gonna make an impact there for our bringing tourism down highway. So maybe just doing, I'll have it doing it like the first time, you know? That's the only one really qualifying now, no?
I, I just, I, I, I agree with, uh, the chairman and, and, um, and Mister Chavez that five inches is overkill. It's, it's just, you know, uh, five inches of asphalt there for the amount of traffic is overkill. And, and so if there's any way that we can find to spend the additional three hundred thousand dollars in a place that's more useful, I think we gotta do it. You know, it's so hard to come up with mugging the road.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, Rick, you're talking about asphalt from where the chip seal is forward? So why, why couldn't we just do the full?
Because you cannot destroy it fifty-eight thousand dollars.
So the chip seal would have to come out, you couldn't make over the.
But if you were to do three inches, still over what you did last year's chip seal. Do the whole thing three inches, how much money would it take?
It'd be less than five hundred thousand. The only other option we have in the Spanish County and the ICIP is Los Rios, which is also a good, a good candidate. But the LMI there is questionable as well.
Rick, or just the chip seal? I, I love this idea of the chip seal.
Would we have enough money if we applied for the whole thing and we did a regadero road, uh, Las Tussas and Cactus Flower?
It's pretty close. I haven't, I haven't run those numbers, but you know, it's, it's, both those roads are well drained, one of them has a base course. If, if we have to, if we need to spend the money, we can spend base course money on, uh, on, uh.
Cactus.
Cactus Flower. And connect it with West Romero. So those three, it could possibly.
They would qualify as CDBG.
They're in here, the LMI is, is really the question there.
No, but what we do when we do the surveys too, if we, Mike, you need to speak up, we have to hear. Mike, why don't you come to the.
So, Mister Chairman, Commissioner Sanchez. So then the three inches asphalt. I think we talked about another road up in Lami. It's not on the ICIP.
What I would recommend is just tap for those three roads and do the surveys on them. And I think we'd be better off, I think we, we'd have a better opportunity to qualify those three particular roads and do chip seal on them. And, and, and apply for those three roads for the CDBGs. And that would probably show more favorably at the state level because we're doing three projects that we can complete instead of one we can't complete. So, I mean, those are the things that we need to look at when we're planning this, right? I agree with Rick, I think, uh, those three roads would probably make sense to tap. Using chip seals.
Using chip seal and offering them.
Let me ask this question, how come Blueberry Hill was very put on this? You know what I mean? Blueberry Hill Road needs, it's, it's gotta need work, you know what I mean? And I'm sure part of that is, you know, well past, uh, the forty-nine percent or fifty-one percent.
Yeah, it's a major, major thing that is just used all the time for fifteen years and it's not gonna last that much longer. Blueberry Hill.
Yeah, number, rank number sixteen, number seventeen.
But I'm not sure that we think. Well, I'm not, parts of it would qualify.
Sure sections of it would qualify for online, online.
Cause there are some pretty expensive houses here on the western ridge that would throw it.
But, but I think our best bet is to qualify for those three roads that Rick mentioned.
Las Tussas, Cactus Flower and Regadero.
I think our chances are better there than not knowing about the other roads.
But that's gonna qualify.
I, 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 I would recommend those three roads.
And then if the. And then if we hit the chips forward, they mean.
The chips.
All right, well. Let me ask, let me ask this question. The Milson Rogers, it runs all the way into over here by, uh.
Upper Ranchitos Bridge.
Yeah, well, that portion there is still Milson Rogers, I'm sure that portion will qualify.
That's true.
You know, that part right there.
We can do a little bit of that section because I don't think you'll need that much more there than that section.
And just do an overlay of two inches or whatever it takes, you know what I mean?
That would expend all your funds completely? I don't think it qualifies.
No, but over here, further like towards the river. I mean, up there, it ain't gonna qualify because up there.
Up north.
Further north you go.
Yeah.
We were able to get Upper Ranchitos to qualify. And that's close to that area where we did the survey.
Between the river and Frankelino. I don't think you guys know Frankelino, but that's, that's where you have to.
Yes.
That's, probably don't have problem with LMI there.
Right.
You don't have a lot, well, you do, but that's a portion that has the Indian property to the, to the right if you're headed north.
But you also have to deal with wetlands in, in that area of the Milson.
The agri area, I think when you guys did that, uh, in the bar mill, I think that included a certain area, correct? No?
No, there are, in fact, right there in the Indian land, that's, that, uh, kind of overflow sometimes. A lady lives right next to it, always complaining about. So that is a wetland, it's, I don't know, it's, uh, less likely, it probably is too.
So the least questionable are still Tussas, Cactus and Regadero.
And I think that leaves us with that option, you cool with that?
Yeah, but, but actually the lower portion of Millicent is, is in the same category as far as questionability. I think it would meet the LMI. And, um, we do have some funds that are already assigned to that, so you could go beyond with those other funds. In other words, you, you know, you could only use CDBG funds for that area that hit the LMI, but the other hundred and fifty or two hundred thousand if we set aside, you could, you could continue with that.
And that's to the county's advantage because you can, uh, leverage that for the CDBG.
And we can use it as, and that's a lot more leverage in the ten percent, we would actually leverage for the five hundred thousand, so that should help too in the scoring criteria.
It would be a good selling point on the CDBG, the fact that we have other money that's already been dedicated for it and so.
Mister Chairman Commissioners, maybe it does a good time to look at the funding that.
It's a segue into the funding.
I'll give you my fifty-eight thousand for the five hundred.
Are we gonna, Rick, are we gonna have to get a hard copies of that? I don't know if I can.
Oh, everybody has it?
So, so then Commissioners, uh, you know, Mister Chairman, then, uh, you know, once upon God, I mean, you guys gotta figure out how you guys gonna do Milson Rogers and. I mean, I know, cause with CDBG. The end of my life?
For most of it. So Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, I put this together at Steve's request actually, uh, through the assistance of, uh, finance. It's more or less a history.
Rick, put the timeframe on this, this road, uh, CDBG. Well, yeah, they're knocking it out.
I think we had this by next spring, the, the CDBG, when he, at least by summer. Next year. Next year. Well, two thousand fourteen, right? No, two thousand fifteen.
I think so.
Okay.
And I'm just, I'm basing that on, uh, on Upper Ranchitos where we were able to pave it during the summer, so. Anita has, Anita has to do, had to happen way before then.
Mister, Mister Chairman Commissioners, uh, I think the application is due in May. Uh, the board meets in September, is my understanding, and then the awards are given September, October timeframe shortly after that.
So we'll be in the winter month probably.
We'll be in the winter month, so then it'll be eligible for the stream.
Better put a year's like yours up there, it'd be a two day job.
Yeah.
As long as you got the props, man. Ready to drop, we would knock it down in one day.
So if we work on the scenario of the CDBG going towards, um, Tussas, Cactus and Regadero, uh, what other funding options are there?
Okay, Mister Chairman, well, to, to lead up to that, then I'll, I'll go through the history and I'll put together, I guess, the, the funding sources. We listed here, you, that, that been available to Taos County since July two thousand ten. One of the ones, as we were talking earlier, the group two funding, that was a long time legislation. Uh, the bid for that was three hundred and forty-three million quarters, eighteen thousand, one million six four. We may have spent more than that, uh, trying to get more of the balance. Cause that was not the total funding available to Taos County. So, so that was one tag, that happened on most room and that, that's it. Fiscal year two thousand ten, two thousand eleven, the projects are run by the CAP COOP NSB funding as LGRF, local government local fund. Only Mexico five seventy, which is two districts put together to do that. Uh, we have Lower Hondo Road, Sunshine Road, Pituva, Donicolas, Cañara, all those last four in district. The last three in district five were just base course, Sunshine was base course as well, for a total of two hundred and twenty-seven, seven thirty-seven now. Now, keep in mind that the totals in the end, because the funding count more or less stays the same, sometimes it goes down. It was down in that year. Fiscal year two thousand eleven, two thousand twelve, again, a continuation of C one ten. On that particular year, we had a fifty thousand, uh, dollar cap, uh, capital lane. So that was improvement there and continued with that improvement. Again, Lower Hondo continued with fifty-eight thousand, one forty-seven. Harcito Road in District, um, two was base course in its entirety. Lower Hito was also base course, uh, for Bonnaya and then Lower Hondo. That's a, that's a mistake there, that shouldn't be listed again. So that was here to eleven, uh, eleven, twelve, fiscal year twelve thirteen, again, coming road one ten, continuing with two districts participating, is that done? You haven't gotten to Los Corlos yet. The logical terminal would be to get, at least get past that. So, so really it's kind of not done. Uh, Lower Hondo also continued with that, that still doesn't get us to, to the bridge at the river. Which also would be kind of like a logical place to stop because of the spec flag. Paving of, of school road and Benesco, that was, um, well, that was done in very bad shape. The district is very appreciative of that. And then of course we did a regadero last year for fifty-seven thousand, one hundred and thirty-four. Now notice the, the numbers are, it's whatever's available divided by five, which comes out to about fifty-eight thousand dollars.
And Mister Chavez of Regadero, what we saw today?
That's this.
That's that fifty-seven or fifty-eight thousand dollars. Mileage wise, how much was that?
Zero point six two mile.
And the, the Lower Hondo Road, uh, paving project, that's the one that goes down to the Janda?
Yeah, eventually it climbs up and goes down, meets up with Janda Road, Janda Bridge.
And as far as any money's available, it's completely zilched out as far as, uh, the C one ten is concerned? That's why you stopped at that juncture?
Yeah, these, these are yearly, that's all we got, we spend whatever we get. Something like one hundred and fifty dollars, thirteen cents, whatever, we try to spend out with. So then, uh, going to the next page shows CDBG funding of Ranchitos Road, uh, about three or four years ago, four hundred and thirty-nine thousand. And, and some of that, I mean, I use per, uh, publication and stuff she needs to do. So you almost, and I don't know if this includes the lo, the local match, the county match, it may as well.
I think it includes the county.
And then, uh, last year, La Pla, uh, Plaza Road and, uh, Chavista, Rich Kito, Benesco. Those, those totaled four hundred and six thousand, seven hundred and forty-three. For a total for CDBG, uh, the last three or four years for eight thousand, eight hundred and forty-six thousand ninety-one dollars. And then we listed also Captain La Hesma, it's also three ninety-nine that you guys did, uh, all three of the commissioners put together to do that. The, the paving cost one four six seven seventy-five. To do the engineering, another reliability of seven hundred and eight, seven thousand, one hundred and eighty, for a total of one hundred and fifty-four thousand, seven hundred and six. Which is more than a fifty thousand times three. And then the other project improvement is Cuchilla Road, which was done with three ninety-nine, that was done a couple of years ago, which takes refer with the old one that, that, uh, used that money for forty-three thousand, one seventy-seven. So in summary, I have trip to the, the three fiscal year, uh, LGRF, CDBG, three ninety-nine. And then the special three ninety-nine, that was in the district by. We put this also in two thousand ten, two thousand nine, two thousand ten, we used the LGRF to do an engineering study on twelve bridges coming away in order to be, uh, eligible for federal funding. Uh, since then, uh, operated it and dropped out, which is now the, in the townhouse, however, that study results, the last study for that particular bridge would be available to the thousand, obviously. See, that cost about three hundred, two hundred and twelve thousand, we spent all of it, because that was a bit on the engineering for that. So what's most important for you today, I think, is what's in the future, in the future for thirteen, fourteen. As you have identified in the past, this Milson Roger. That is three districts together, dividing what's available by five, which is fifty-eight thousand, five twenty-two. Twenty, per district or three times that is one seventy-five, five sixty-six. That, as I said in the past meeting, will get you about six tenths of a mile. Considering that you would have to process place and compact existing pivot and then overlay that with at least two inches of, of successful.
Rick, if we applied fifty-eight thousand or CDBG funding for Regadero, that would leave a, an additional fifty-eight thousand from here?
Ask me that again, man.
If, if we've got a hundred and nineteen thousand that could be applied from CDBG funding, that would, um, eliminate the need of the fifty-eight thousand dollars from this particular bucket.
Now, now fifty-eight thousand. Now, now two, now another fifty-eight thousand will get two hundred and sixteen, sixteen thousand. And last year's prices would be a hundred and nineteen thousand, four hundred to finish up. So, so that's how you identify projects for the next coming cycle, you know, which means as soon as we could put, uh, specs out, specification, get bid, we can, and of course weather permitted, we can start spending that, that one right there listed in twelve fourteen. Okay, for, for fourteen, fifteen, which we've had meetings, uh, discussing that. And, uh, we've seen that there, there's a mistake, it's based on the previous year's funding levels, again, two hundred and ninety-two. That's just dividing down by five, which is fifty-eight by twenty-two. And you've identified coming in Medio. Regadero Road again, that would, that would almost complete that if mistaken every year. Chavisa Road, Millicent, misspelled. And San Barbara Road, chip seal for four hundred and five, fifteen dollars.
So if we freed up fifty-eight thousand from this pocket for Regadero, we could apply it to Camino de Medio or Millicent Rogers?
And those, those, Mister Chairman, are just LGRF, CAP COOP, of course you have three ninety-nine that is contingent on built, I believe, next year. So you may or may not get that depending on that, so I'm, it's something considered, we're trying to save the, we're gonna have this taken on LGRF or whatever else. Also, the timeframe is probably towards the end of the year, how that coincides with, with these cycles is something to also.
So the three ninety-nine, what's the total on that protection?
Fifty thousand.
Fifty?
Fifty.
Five zero?
Per district.
Per district, so about two hundred and fifty thousand total. And then, from the legislature, hopefully it'll go into effect today?
Today or tomorrow.
And what is the total, and that's a joint?
Hundred and thirty for Camino del Medio, for the county, hundred and eighty for the town of Taus.
Three hundred and eight.
That's a joint.
And the mayor is dedicated to put it.
And that was specifically for me.
Yeah, specifically, yeah.
Then is that available for just, is it land acquisition as well, or just that for engineering?
Can you use that for anything, as capital treatment?
Let me ask this question, Mr. Chairman. Commissioner Sanchez, if we get the CDVG funding to complete Regalero, would you contribute fifty-eight thousand on the CAP Co-op to Millicent Rogers, so we can get a little further on that?
Yes, sir. I think that'd be something, I'd give you the fifty-eight and I'd get the five hundred dollars.
We should do business more often. But actually, it ends up being only a hundred and twenty thousand total of Regalero.
Then I lose the bigger numbers out of there.
So is that still a bit of the scenario that, over Regalero, Dust Tussas and Cactus Flower?
Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna make a quick phone call to our lobbyists. I believe what we did with the, when we put the capital improvement plan, is that we put all the four roads together. And so if that's the case, and they did give us a hundred and thirty, and the commission chose to go another route with that hundred and thirty, there's a possibility it could be anyone of the four roads. But let me, let me make a quick, no? Let me make a quick phone call right now.
No, that's committed.
It's committed.
Mr. Chairman, I need a list of what the lobbyists got us.
Why we're gonna, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it, we're gonna get it.
It was better to the house, but.
Rick, how much to finish Lower Hondo? That was on there every year and never got finished. What's left to get to the bridge?
More or less.
Probably about another equal portion.
Fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight, you gotta get this quarter mile like you can.
Okay, so you might get to the bridge with that?
Millicent Rogers?
Yeah.
From the bridge?
Don't take my money!
Yeah, I just told you.
Come on, I keep my sweet logs.
It is.
Well, you're a, we don't have to allow it.
Before you tell me that I gotta go up to Millicent Rogers and grade that little portion, before, then, then it was, it was pretty bad.
Thank you for that. It was pretty bad.
It looked pretty good today. That's because the commissioner's trouble will buy there.
So, just to kind of get back on track, what were you gonna do?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just called Rock just to double check, that money is specifically for coming in the day. If he was gonna double check, I knew John would text me here, and he's pretty sure it's specific for coming in.
Doesn't matter, because they are not giving it up anywhere.
Well, the mayor has a hundred and eighty different, we have a hundred and thirty.
But combined, we can get a lot further with that.
Correct, absolutely.
So I think we kind of have an idea now as to where things have to go, do we need to make that decision today?
I ain't too sure.
It would be good, I mean, we can get going on the surveys.
Okay.
If for some reason we have a problem with the surveys or something comes up, then we can come back to the commission very quickly.
Okay, we'll wait for Commissioner Sanchez to come through.
Mr. Mayor, if it wasn't specifically for coming in, maybe I'm gonna donate my part to you.
Thank you.
Very good, thank you. We can do that right away, yes. At this time, we'll go ahead and open the CDVG hearing up to the public, for any public info, opinion. Is there anyone that wishes to speak? Mr. Philkey, Stephen, go ahead, Stephen?
My questions are more general in terms of road, road development as opposed to.
Would you, Stephen, if you could come forward, actually, you have to be sworn in, right? Yeah, go ahead and come to this.
Well, we'll get him in a little here.
Okay.
The clerkestest.
Sorry about that, Stephen.
Do you swear and affirm under oath a penalty of law for perjury that the testimony you are about to give is true and factual?
I do.
Please state your name for the record.
Stephen's home. There's been, I've heard a lot of conversation about extending roads and making connectors and bypasses and so on and so forth. If you, if you look at where that projection is for, this sort of bypass, the road west, connecting West Romero and Sunshine and Chumisa, I think I've got it straight, and it comes out, you know, well south on sixty-eight. And yet, that area on sixty-eight is the area that is approaching the area the BLM is trying to protect as an entrance, as a view ship. And the road, I can't see it, this resolution, but it appears that that projected road goes through a drainage course. I don't know how deep it is, there are no contours there, I can't tell, but you can see the tracks and you can see the way in which the development has progressed, that there is this gap. There on one side, there are these. There's all this development right here, and then there's a road that's been put in right here, and there's nothing in the middle here. The reason there's nothing in the middle is because it's drainage, and maybe Rick knows what it looks like, the contours, but that, that concerns me, the idea that you're gonna be building in drainage ways and water courses. This road, Caípa Ión, this is Caí, Caí, Caíón. I don't think there's actually a road here. This is the, the new playground, the new soccer field right here, and there's, there's nothing, there are no houses here. What there is, is there's this dirt track that looks like it's sort of waiting to be, by prescription, to become a road. And so, obviously, if you hiccup with Saint Francis, and next thing you know, you've got a road going right across the heart of your, your agriculture code, green belt, agricultural. So I don't think that the kind of proper consideration is being given to this notion of bypass, connector. I disagree with the two of Caí, Caíón. I sympathize with the people that live there, the dust and dirt, but just the other day, I was passed, and it reminds me of something that Commissioner Veroni said to me one day, when he was out with viewing Millicent Rogers, or I think it was Millicent Rogers, and he got, in a convoy, he got passed by somebody, he flipped you guys off, out of state, you know, somebody driving from out of state. Well, I was passed the other day on Chumisa Road, which in this section right here is not paved. I mean, this, I was going fifteen, fifteen miles an hour, as far as I'm concerned, is a good speed for a dirt road. There's no reason to drive forty or fifty miles an hour on that road as people do, this guy passed me, and I could see they went on Sunshine Road, and I wasn't headed that way, but I went up, I followed him home. He came out and asked me, he said to me, "Did you follow me just to tell me that I should slow down?" And I said, "Yes, I wanted you to know that after driving on that road, you're driving too fast. If you don't slow down, it's that kind of driving that contributes to the destruction of the road." So I think all of these kinds of questions need to be thought through about what are, what are we doing in terms of, where is this road, and where are all these cars going? I listened to Juan Esteban Arion, about a week ago, say that the local politicians don't address the important issues. He said they want to bring in more people, and he said, "Where are they gonna put them? Where are they gonna get the water for it?" So, all of, all of this is tied together, particularly roads as a, as a means of growth and development. So I don't think you can take them as little pieces, you need to see the whole picture. And with respect to that, that aerial photo and maps, I, this is a map that I would like to see, in terms of this map at a, at the scale, that's the scale of one to two hundred thousand, it's probably one to forty thousand. It would fit on a sheet of paper that size, and this is the neighborhood association map, it's dated February two thousand eleven. I, for my, for me, if you're gonna have a meeting next week to talk about neighborhood associations, land uses, you need to see that. As far as I'm concerned, I need to see that at a scale at which it's understandable. And it's not for delineating property ownership, but it's conceptual, it's about informing decisions, and I think it needs to be seen. If that's a base map, a base aerial photo, and I guess I could ask Rick, do you, does the county have the USDA soils layer as a, as a digitized layer? Do you use that, you don't use that? Peter Vehill at the Talos Soil and Water Conservation District has that information, he's mapped. I've spoken to Peter on a number of occasions, I've sort of segued from, you know, questions of roads to land use, but roads, roads and land use are distinctly tethered, they're tied together. Peter has that information, he can show you what he has, and he can show you those, those lands that are designated, probably agricultural, or he can at least show you the soils, what the soils are. It seems to me that that's, those kinds of maps are important to making, consider decisions about land uses for myself.
Mr. Chairman, we're here to talk about the CDVG grant, we're not here to talk about no land use, this public here is for CDVG.
All right, then I'll, then I'll stop talking about that, it's just, I apologize. But again, I, with respect to these roads, these maps, I think it's important to map this kind of information, so that you can see it and can think about it, as opposed to somebody talking about a road and trying to hold that concept in your head, it's hard, it's difficult. So I would just say, be careful about bypasses and paving roads, where do they go, and what do they lead to, what are the development pressures? Thank you.
Stephen, with regards to Camino del Medio, which is, you know, like I said earlier, I hold that close to my chest because of the fact that I, I know what the needs are of the communities that I represent, and those communities also include a lot of District One, Los Corvos, and UNM area, the golf course area. By improving Camino del Medio and planning for long-term on it, with proper sidewalks and infrastructure and drainage, it would clearly create a parallel road to Highway sixty-eight that would, say, for example, in the case of an emergency, eliminate the need of someone in an ambulance having to go onto sixty-eight, instead, they would be able to use Camino del Medio and drive up north, northerly onto Canyon West to get to the hospital. And it would eliminate a lot of that traffic, having to go, if you're ever at UNM in the evenings, when people are trying to come out of that intersection onto sixty-eight, it's quite the mess. And then all that traffic goes through sixty-eight at night, and it just creates a lot of traffic in the Rancho's Church, Martina's area. A lot of that traffic would now be able to get on, straight into Camino del Medio on Tom Holder, and you improve Tom Holder, and then from there go on to State Road two forty, or go up to Canyon West, or into Town, or any of these areas, it would really improve it. Whenever you have the time, I'd be willing to have you go on the truck with me and my dogs, and I can show you the route that I'm thinking of and suggesting to this commission, so that you know clearly as to where it would go and the areas that it would serve. And the same thing with the Talos News, if you ever want to do that, Elizabeth. I rarely get quoted in the Talos News, but maybe this would be a good time for for you to go and visit the area and look at what I'm thinking would be an ideal road that would serve the constituents of Taus County and the valley.
I, I, see, I, I understand your concern, and I understand the concern of the constituents, but the very questions you raise are the ones I'm saying, to think about, think about the other, the other implications of that, too. Do you get, what, what do you get, when you fulfill that need, what else do you get, what are the other implications? Those, those kinds of questions.
It would create a lot of safety for not only our constituents, but the people coming into the Taus area, if they're driving through from Highway sixty-eight from Santa Fe to or from Santa Fe, Espanola, they could immediately get on that center road and get into their homes safely. Eventually, through the NPRPO, I would also like to suggest State Road two forty, that needs to be improved. If, if you go on State Road two forty or Tom Holder Road on, on the weekends at night, when everybody is out and about partying and driving to, in the, to their homes in the middle of the night, you want to stay away from those roads, because they're very dangerous.
I bicycle them, so they're not.
Yeah, and I'm glad you're still alive, because they're very dangerous.
Well, I mean, yeah, you have to, I mean, just about anywhere around your danger, by virtue of.
But it would, it would be really great if, you know, and I'm not thinking of getting anything done in the next year or two years, that, you know, like we talked about this morning. This is something that's gonna take five, ten years out, probably even longer, but if it's done in phases, and if it's done properly, then I think it would really serve the community well.
I'd be willing, more than willing to lie to your dogs.
Okay, very good. Anyone else, Mr. Philkey?
No, I'm fine, thank you.
Okay, anyone else, Kansas, Elizabeth? That's it?
Yeah.
I will do so, Mr. Chair, Commissioner, this time I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and then we'll move on to the decision making, okay?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, just a little clarity here, so in the fiscal year 2013, 14, I'm crossing on Aldeja de Arros, all right? Okay, and I'm putting the money in Millicent. All right?
Yes.
And then, next year, or next cycle, Aldeja de Arros out, so I'll put in Lamar Road. That's not, that's true.
Or funding from, from where?
LGRF, because your last, your last year.
If, if Camino del Medio is on Estoril, is that, would that be some, maybe that?
Is it?
It's not on the ICIP.
Well, this is a. This is LGRF.
It doesn't have to be.
Well, then, okay. Camino del Medio and Estoril would probably be one that, you know, not that I would.
So, as far as CDVG then, it will be Regalero?
Regalero.
Which is about a hundred and twenty thousand, that's the estimate, what's the total mileage on it?
The mileage left is one point two eight, total is one point eight.
Okay, and then, Cactus Flower Road, which is also on the ICIP?
And Tussas.
And Tussas.
Tussas, now, Tussas will probably just go to irrigation ditch in the direction of Los Corvos.
And what is the total mileage of those?
I don't have that.
Okay, so can we do a motion on those at this point?
You would need a vote, yes, Mr. Chairman.
Don't move. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blakenburg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Drad?
Yes.
Mr. Barokey?
Yes.
Chairman Ramaro?
Yes, okay, do we need to, other decisions with regards to roads? So we'll just hope now for those legislative monies to come forward.
And the surveys.
The surveys are next.
Did, do we still need to talk to Anita, just making sure that everything is kosher with her?
I'll put a phone call to her. If any change is mentioned, we can ring back to the discussion.
Okay, so do, Mike, Mr. Rick, do you foresee any decision that we made today? Is there anything that we can deal with, we could come up with now, based on the time and the need? So you will conduct surveys then for each one of those roads?
Yeah, Anita will conduct the surveys for each particular project that you're ready to handle. As a part of your CDBG application.
If that's it, then with regards to CDBG, we'll move on to item six C. This is a request to hire the public housing manager at a higher rate than midpoint. Mr. Chuleta, Mr. Padomeo's not around?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Allison's gonna handle this one, and I just sent a text, Mr. Chairman, you're shooting coming down there.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question. On this, why are we hiring the manager when I'm gonna turn it over to Section eight? And why is it that...
Yeah, actually, the person that's in the job is in the job for a year now in a temporary position. And the reason she's being hired, what she used to make is she was there for about twenty years running the public housing section in the Housing Authority. We brought her back because we needed somebody experienced. She will at some point here by June thirtieth not be our employee, as will all the other people at the Housing Authority. So what I'm trying to do is in order to protect our local employees, make sure that none of them are in temporary status, that they've all been classified. And we're also doing a lot of training with them to make sure their credentials up so that the new agency will retain all of them. Because that was one of our goals, to try to keep the jobs local.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I also wanted to point out that this is not coming out of our general fund. This is some people's coming out of HUD, which is a federal funding, and will transfer over when, everything transfers over from the county to the regional. And so on some level, it's protecting her and her job as a Talos County employee, or sorry, a housing employee, but as a Talos County resident in the future. But this is not coming out of our general fund, our total.
Mr. Chuleta, Mr. Malone, none of this has to be discussed in the executive session?
This is, Mr. Chairman, this is just a change in a rate, so...
So that's fine?
That's fine to be in public session.
But we can't discuss the individuals themselves.
Exactly.
Okay, Commissioner Sanchez.
Can we ask who that person is? You can, you can ask, that's fine. But we shouldn't have a discussion about an action on personnel in a public session.
It's Evelyn Abeta, and normally this wouldn't come before you. This would be Steve's decision. But whenever we hire somebody above the midpoint, he needs consensus from you to pay it every...
So, Mr. Chairman, also, Mr. Bellis, what happens now? You're out of the picture, right?
Hopefully, very shortly here.
What happens with that six percent we've given you? Does that go away?
That money is being identified by HUD as what the new consulting group will get. They'll run it, the housing authority is capable of overseeing it themselves.
Okay, any other questions or comments? And the recommendation of staff?
Recommendation to approve.
So moved. Okay, sir, a second?
Dave.
Okay. Any other discussion, comments? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blakenburg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Drad?
Yes.
Mr. Barokey?
Yes.
Chairman Ramaro?
Yes, okay, and then on item seven, budget matters, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following. It's been advised to the commission that we're gonna table both of these items because our finance director is out.
So moved to table item seven A and B, Chairman.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blakenburg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Drad?
Yes.
Mr. Barokey?
Yes.
Chairman Ramaro?
Yes, item eight, county manager's report, matters, discussion, consideration, decisions regarding the following. E nine one one, United States of USF, S?
Forest Service.
Forest Service, the space presentation.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I've also been asked to table this in our E nine one one meeting. I was, as you are well aware of, I was in Washington last week. There was some discussion with Forest Service about a presentation of them allowing them to take over the second floor of the Sheriff's Department, possible IDOT. That hasn't transpired, and it's not anything that we need to discuss at this point. Forest Service is still coming over with us for the E nine one one, but this is, this was a different matter, definitely IDOT. And so I'll ask to table this, and if it comes back up, it's something that we can discuss in front of the commission.
So moved, Dave?
Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blakenburg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes.
Mr. Drad?
Yes.
Mr. Barokey?
Yes.
Chairman Ramaro?
Yes. Motion for German?
So moved.
Second, Madam Clerk?
Mr. Blakenburg?
Yes.
Vice Chair Sanchez?
Yes. 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 Yes.